Yes?
That there be light.
Okay. I'm not going to use this.
Is everyone really okay with this?
Well, I voted in favor. Oh, wait a minute, I'm against it. Sorry, I'm against that right there.
Do you have a question?
I'll have to clear it. I'm fine with it. Fine with it. One more minute.
You want? No. You're second, aren't you? I'm second.
Come to order. Lift the record reflect that all board members are present. Could you please rise? Tony, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Sure. Please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes?
Move the approval.
We have a motion for approval, second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? Please vote.
Do you want the whole consent calendar or just the minutes?
No, I'm talking, Ms., I'm talking about the minutes.
There's more on the consent calendar. You want the whole thing?
Ah, if we can do it all, okay, if you want to, at once. Want to do the whole thing at once, Kevin?
Okay.
Okay, then we have a motion.
I made the motion. I'll amend the motion to include both items on the consent calendar.
Do the whole.
Include both items on the consent calendar.
Okay, please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Now, let's move down to the consent calendar action. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Yes, go to the department heads. Departmental items, none? We have no items, other items along, legal counsel has none? Okay. Any comments from the board members? Seeing none, we'll adjourn.
All right, we'll open this meeting as I speak into the microphone.
We'll open this meeting of the Camarillo Sanitary District. Let the record reflect that all directors are present. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. Chair.
Do I hear any public comments? Seeing none, let's move to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
Someone will vote consent.
We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Please vote. And that is a five-zero unanimous vote to approve the consent calendar. There are no departmental items. Any items from legal counsel? Any items from staff?
No.
Any comments from the Board of Directors? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting of the Sanitary District.
Call this meeting of the Camarillo City Council to order and ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I would request that we pull an item from the consent calendar.
Certainly.
I would like to ask that we pull number, or item K. Go to Administrative Services.
K.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
K as in?
Okay.
As in?
Knife.
Somebody said knife. That doesn't sound like a K.
What is K? What's K?
Kangaroo.
Kangaroo.
How long's it been since you did your ABC books?
I know. That's true. You've done them more recently.
Okay. Administrative Services, okay, so that's consent. K. Okay. Any other amendments to the agenda? All right. We'll take up everything in a few minutes, but right now, we have a proclamation, a presentation of a proclamation, actually. So, could we have the representatives from the Camarillo Council on the Aging come forward? Welcome. It's on, okay. Welcome. We were having quite a discussion here as you, some of you walked in. Somebody has decided that it's now Older Americans. Personally, I would prefer to be a senior citizen than to be called an older anything, so I'm waiting for the next person to be the head of some organization so they can change it to another name. But for tonight, we're going to have a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Camarillo, California, for Older Americans Month. Whereas, the City of Camarillo acknowledges that older adults represent a significant portion of our population and play an important role in our community. And whereas, our older adults and active community members involved in volunteering, membership, arts, and culture, and civic engagement, they give freely of their time. You know, it's really hard to read with that light off. Thank you very much. Whereas, the older adults are active community members involved in volunteering, mentorship, arts, and culture, and civic engagement, they give freely of their time sharing their wealth of skills, experience, knowledge, and wisdom. And whereas, recognizing the successes and contributions of our community elders encourages their ongoing participation in further accomplishments. And whereas, it is important for all community members to take the time to recognize older adults and the people who serve and support them as important and vital citizens who contribute greatly to the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Charlotte Craven, Mayor of the City of Camarillo, jointly with all of my fellow council members, proclaim May 2018 as Older Americans Month. We thank you for bringing this to our attention, and would one or all of you like to add something?
Would you like to say something? Oh, sure. One of the things that the Camarillo Council on Aging has provided, I believe you each have one of these, is the brand-new Senior Resource Guide. It's a little different, this is published every two years. There's some great little shots in the back of our little.
Boecon Villa.
We've got the city flower back here. And at the airport, and our, one of our horses in the back. But the new thing that's in this magazine is there's a trolley map. Because on page thirty-one of your book, you'll see a trolley map. So, we're pretty excited to have this out to give some more resources to our seniors that are so busy doing great things.
Well, thank you and welcome. Why don't you all introduce yourselves?
I'm Marlon Black.
Arlene Myrow.
Jay Evans.
And Lynn Jones.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming. Let's get, John usually takes a picture of all the proclamations as they're presented. Thank you for coming, and thank you for bringing this to our attention. Okay, I don't think we need the bright lights any longer. Thank you for turning them on so I could read that. Somebody got it. Um, next is the Consent Calendar with the exception of item K.
Move items A through, I'm sorry, Mr. Turek.
Second the motion, go ahead, Tony.
Oh, all right, let me make the motion. I'll move items A through J, respectively.
I'll second.
The Consent Calendar is a motion to approve it with the exception of item K. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Next is, under Public Works, Conference Center Drain Project, CC 1101, Construction Phase Services.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Craven. This item is to authorize a deposit to Ventura County Watershed Protection District for the cost of plan checking, permitting, and construction inspection of the Conference Center Drain Project. I'll give a brief update on the status of the project. The Conference Center project, as shown on the screen, consists of three parcels which are shown outlined in red. And this is at the northeast corner of La Siposis Road and Ventura Boulevard. The two large parcels were recently acquired from the city by the TMMian Development Group, and the narrow middle parcel will remain under city ownership since this is where the existing concrete channel is located. The concrete channel is in need of replacement, and the Conference Center Drain Project will replace the existing channel with new concrete box drains which will be covered over, allowing the area on top to be used for parking for the Conference Center. Council previously approved an agreement with the developer for the Conference Center site which includes provisions for the city to design the new box drains, and then reimburse the developer who will perform the construction of the new drains. There are also existing overhead electric power lines that run along the east side of the channel and then cross over about the middle of the project that need to be relocated underground due to the drain project. The city will be reimbursing the developer for the cost of the electrical undergrounding work also. Since the Watershed District maintains the drainage channel, they reviewed the city's plans, and they recently issued a permit for the drain construction, and they will be inspecting the construction also. Therefore, a deposit from the city to the district is required to cover the costs charged for these services. That is the item before we deny it. The developer is in the final stages of a contract with granite construction for the construction of the drain improvements, and that's expected to start very soon and be completed near the end of the year. City staff and consultants will continue to be involved in the project, providing construction management oversight for the duration. As a refresh, here's a preliminary layout of the Conference Center improvements, showing the two hotels and embassy suites on the, oh, wrong way, on the left side of the, of the site with the attached Conference Center. The drain, you can see, is running through the middle of the site and shown as being covered over and providing parking area. And then the second hotel on the east side of the site with the other outlined buildings, restaurant, and retail space also on the site. The first round of reviews for the grading, parking, and utility plans was just completed, and the plans have been returned to the developer's engineer for revisions. The building plans for the two hotels, Conference Center, and other buildings will be submitted for review and permitting in the very near future. The grading and construction of the site improvements could begin late this year and will be followed by the building construction, which will continue throughout next year. That's a update on the status of the drain and the overall hotel, Conference Center, and improvement project. And concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Tremblay.
Dave, I'm referring now to big page A three on the service estimate from the Watershed Protection District. And in reviewing this, it struck me how much this, how high this estimate is. For the plan check alone, it's almost $53,000, but I am thinking that that's both the plan check and the management of the project during the project, correct?
That's correct.
And then, the total amount of inspection costs during the project equates to about $143,000, and that's kind of, that's not just robust, that's breathtaking to me. In your professional opinion, is that a, that's eleven hundred and, that's actually thirteen hundred hours of inspection hours. In your professional opinion, is that a number that makes sense to you?
So, how that was established is essentially looking at the estimated duration of the construction contract, and this would basically be the maximum that's expected, that an inspector would be out there eight hours a day for those number of days of construction. There will more likely be times when it may not be a full day of inspection required, but in developing this estimate to establish, you know, a deposit that's going to be charged against, these are the hours based on that duration of construction that's expected for this project that it's going to take.
Well, for the, for the construction inspector three alone, it's about 1,200 hours, so I equate that to about thirty weeks of a forty-hour week. If I'm doing my mental math correctly on the fly, that's about thirty forty-hour weeks. So, it just, it just seems very high. But again, this is something that the Watershed Protection District has come back with.
Right.
We don't have a lot of flexibility as, insofar as that's concerned.
Right. I will mention, as far as the hourly rate goes for Public Works Inspector, that's much lower than we would be able to acquire through a consulting firm for inspection also. So, we feel it's, you know, again, based on the estimated contract period, which again, you know, hopefully the contractor can perform quicker than, than, you know, what we're estimating, if possible. So, the actual costs may vary from what's shown here.
Okay, well, that sounds like an advertisement. However, sorry to be flip. Okay, then, there's really not a lot we can do on it.
Right.
But I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes, this, I guess it is working. This doesn't include what we have to do to cross the street. This is just across the property, right?
That's correct.
So, we have a whole lot more to spend, and do we have to use their engineering estimates again going across the street?
So, are you, you mean from?
When we go under the roadway from that project.
Under Ventura and, right, so that's a second phase, a future phase project that's in our capital improvement program. It's not a part of this.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm agreeing with Tony on the cost of this thing. And so, we'll have to deal with them again.
Yes.
This is a deposit, so if anything should not be used, it's refunded.
They're going to use it, trust me, they're going to use it. Tami County will use it.
They have to account for, I mean.
Definitely, yes.
Hours and so forth.
Right, they account for time spent on a regular basis and deduct from the deposit and give us a accounting of that.
Okay.
And this inspector is on-site. It's not like he shows up once a week to see how things are going.
That's correct. You know, this, this drain project is required to be designed and constructed to county standards. We feel this is the most efficient and cost-effective approach to have their inspector be the one performing the routine daily inspections of this to make sure everything conforms to the requirements.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, I'd like to authorize a deposit of $211,473.91 to the Ventura County Watershed Protection District for plan check, permitting, and construction inspection services.
Is there a second?
Second. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Mrs. McDonald, seconds. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Next is, under City Manager, Chamber of Commerce Professional Services Agreement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Chamber of Commerce is an association of businesses and organizations with over 500 members employing approximately 20,000 people in the Camarillo area. The Chamber's main, many activities include representing the interests of business to government, promoting the community to tourists who wish to visit, and businesses looking to relocate, making the Camarillo area a better place to do business and to live, and provide marketing and networking opportunities to members. On April 8, 2015, the City Council approved a professional services agreement with the Chamber for Community Information and Promotion Services, and Business Retention, Recruitment, and Promotion Services. The term of the agreement is for an initial term of three years with two one-year extensions effective May 1, 2015. We are at the end of the initial term. The compensation for these services is $70,000 per year paid in quarterly installments. The agreement may be terminated by the city at any time with written notice. The Chamber may terminate the agreement upon 30 days prior written notice. Over the past several months, the City of Camarillo has been developing a new comprehensive economic development strategic plan using the expertise of the Nadelson Dale Group to bring together stakeholders to address the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to the Camarillo economy, and to discuss ways to improve the local business climate. The strategic plan will contain several recommendations regarding the city's economic development activities that may change the scope of services being provided by the Chamber through the current professional services agreement. However, until the strategic plan is completed and future roles in carrying out various economic development activities by either city staff or its current economic development partners and collaborators such as the Chamber, or the EDC VC, or others, can be determined, the city has need of the Chamber's current services as contracted through the existing agreement under its current terms and conditions. We ask that you authorize and a one-year extension of the professional services agreement with the Chamber of Commerce, understanding that we will be, as we, as the City Council approves the strategic plan, and we get into the business of figuring out who's going to do what through it, we will be discussing with the Chamber of Commerce their role and adjusting this professional services agreement.
Any questions? Mr. Tremblay.
I have a couple of questions on this, and I think, I see Mr. Cushing in the audience too, but here, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Pyrick, and I want to focus for a minute on big page A eight, section fourteen under conflicts of interest. And that section, in my own personal professional experience, is rather standard in professional services agreements, and it basically means that the Chamber is covenanting that, under the law, and particularly the Political Reform Act, it's not going to have a conflict of interest that's going to hinder its performance of the agreement. So, with that in mind, Mr. Pyrick, is section fourteen standard language for all of the city's consultant contracts in this professional services agreement template?
Yes.
Does it prevent the Chamber of Commerce from criticizing a city program or a practice?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. I, you know, I was on the board, as you know, I was on the board almost, it's been almost 20 years, I guess 18 years, and it's really important to me that there be honest communication between the Chamber and the city as to all aspects of what's going on in the city. And, and I want to make sure that the Chamber of Commerce doesn't feel constrained from, from criticizing a city program or practice, so I'd like to just ask Mr. Cushing briefly if, if the Chamber ever feels like they're, even though they're consulting with the city, do they ever feel constrained from criticizing or critiquing a Chamber, or a city program or a practice?
Sure. Could you state your name for the record, please?
I'm Gary, Gary Cushing, so you have the Camerillo Chamber of Commerce.
Shall I restate the question?
No, no.
Thank you.
Am I being cross-examined by you?
I'm sorry.
There is at no time do we feel at the Chamber that we cannot voice our approval or disapproval of city policies. And I think Joe will attest to that, he and I have a great working relationship, and there's, I can name probably six different times in the last eight, nine months that I've contacted him and said, hey, I think the city's wrong in this decision for planning or plan checks, and so, he and I've gotten together and resolved the issues with the businesses in Camarillo.
Okay, so just to confirm, so if you thought that the Chamber Board thought that the city was, or the Chamber thought that the city was going down the wrong track on something, it would, it would say, hey, you're going down the wrong track?
Absolutely, and we have in the past when, I can bring up, when the city, when I'd brought up about doing art for business development, our Chamber President at the time got up and, and said that we didn't agree with the city policy.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions for Mr. Cushing.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarification?
Mrs. McDonald.
And this, I guess this is for the city attorney. Isn't, doesn't this have to do with the financial interest? I mean, isn't that what we're talking about, the conflict of interest being?
Yes, I understood that those were two separate questions for Mr. Tremblay. So, the answer to your question is yes.
And that was my intent, sorry.
So, that it was just the financial, so you wouldn't, you would, if you had a financial in conflict, then you would approach it differently, but just doing your job is, is a different story, as we all do.
Absolutely right, I could phrase that differently.
Okay. Because we all know that Gary praises us, and Gary can keep us in line too.
Any other question?
I can attest to that.
I don't for Mr. Cushing, but thank you for all that the Chamber does do for us.
Thank you.
I have a question of the city, of city manager. Do we have any idea when we'll get the study back?
Yes, we're coming back to you in closed session with, with another draft next week, next two weeks, on the 23rd.
All righty. Thank you.
Did I say, what did I say?
What, not close, though?
I'm sorry, for clarification, that's study session.
I was wondering.
Your Honor, I'll authorize the city manager to execute, execute the agreement number 2015-16A, extending the Economic Development Services with the Camarillo Chamber of Commerce for a period of one year for the amount of $70,000.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Now we go back to consent item K, and it's under Administrative Services. Did you want a full staff report when you pulled it, or do you have questions or discussion or what?
Well, I think. Let me ask my questions, and then maybe, to save time, and then we may need more information. I was trying to reconcile the increase in costs, and I was trying to figure out why month to month to month, and if you go to big page K, K as in Kevin, I don't know why I didn't say Kevin first, sorry. Three.
Your son.
I know, my son too, and my brother. Anyway, if you go to that chart, and I was trying to figure out what the increase was, and I think the January 1 to June 30, 2016, is that number there correct?
It is, it just covers six months.
Oh, okay. So, then the jump is the whole, okay. Then I guess my question I have is that over six years, we've gone up 12 percent, and the agenda item has to do with increasing the costs, having to do with the increase in minimum wage. The dollar amount that we're going up would imply to me that almost everyone there is at minimum wage, is that true?
That I can't speak to, but part of that increase is that there is a 2 percent increase built into the contract every year overall, and then the additional increase is for six months of this year, and then for 12 months of the next years to the end of the contract. And due to the increase in the minimum wage going up every year, it pushes more people up into that bracket, and so it covers more people as it ages. So, therefore, the increase is larger.
I'm not sure I quite understood what you're telling me, but.
Well, maybe.
Because it seems to me that if you, if your minimum wage goes up each time, it doesn't bump anybody up, they just, it goes up with it.
Includes more people who might not have been included.
Correct.
If they were getting, if the minimum wage was here, and they were getting this, and the minimum wage went up to here, then they're included now, but they weren't before.
Doesn't it go the opposite way? It's the bottom, and you, instead of working down, you work up anyway. But, okay, so let's just say that that number's right. So, that means if you had a 2 percent increase, and we increased, this year is 3.8274 percent, so you're telling me the difference, the 1.8 is just the minimum wage increase?
I did not do it on a percentage basis, but that would stand to reason, yes.
So, that's where I get back to, that means that there are an awful lot of employees that truly are at minimum wage.
Yes, there are.
Which would be the reason behind that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, it's just, it's gotten, it gets more expensive every year, we have this contract.
But we knew that when we.
Well, we also didn't know it was going to go up, you know, 12 percent over the, or almost 13 percent over the last six years.
Well, unfortunately, we did not know that the state would increase the minimum wages, but I will say that it's a wonderful library, and everyone appreciates it, and.
You don't have to sell me on that.
It's outstanding.
And healthcare requirements increased.
Yes, there's the ACA aspects and a number of other things that factor in it.
But that doesn't pass through to us.
No, but it is part of the operating costs.
But that's in that 2 percent?
Yes.
Your son.
I know, my son too, and my brother. Anyway, if you go to that chart, and I was trying to figure out what the increase was, and I think the January 1 to June 30, 2016, is that number there correct?
It is, it just covers six months.
Oh, okay. So then the jump is the whole, okay. Then I guess my question I have is that over six years, we've gone up 12%, and the agenda item has to do with increasing the costs having to do with the increase in minimum wage. The dollar amount that we're going up would imply to me that almost everyone there is at minimum wage, is that true?
That I can't speak to, but part of that increase is that there is a 2% increase built into the contract every year overall, and then the additional increase is for six months of this year, and then for 12 months of the next years to the end of the contract. And due to the increase in the minimum wage going up every year, it pushes more people up into that bracket, and so it covers more people as it ages. So therefore, the increase is larger.
I'm not sure I quite understood what you're telling me, but, because it seems to me that if you, if your minimum wage goes up each time, it doesn't bump anybody up, they just, it goes up with it.
Includes more people who might not have been included.
Correct.
If they were getting, if the minimum wage was here, and they were getting this, and the minimum wage went up to here, then they're included now, but they weren't before.
Doesn't it go the opposite way? It's the bottom, and you, instead of working down, you work up anyway. But, okay, so let's just say that that number's right. So that means if you had a 2% increase, and we increased, this year is 3.8274%, so you're telling me the difference, the 1.8 is just the minimum wage increase?
I did not do it on a percentage basis, but that would stand to reason, yes.
So that's where I get back to, that means that there are an awful lot of employees that truly are at minimum wage.
Yes, there are.
Which would be the reason behind that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, it's just, it's gotten, it gets more expensive every year, we have this contract.
But we knew that when we took over the library.
Well, we also didn't know it was going to go up, you know, 12% over the, or almost 13% over the last six years.
Well, unfortunately, we did not know that the state would increase the minimum wages, but I will say that it's a wonderful library, and everyone appreciates it, and it's outstanding.
You don't have to sell me on that.
And healthcare requirements increased.
Yes, there's the ACA aspects and a number of other things that factor in it.
But that doesn't pass through to us.
No, but it is part of the operating costs.
But that's in that 2%.
Yes.
Which is already in the contract.
Right.
Okay. Okay, what are the wishes of the council?
Move the approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that gets us down to city attorney. We're not going to go into closed session right now, but I would like the attorney to tell us the circumstances under which we will go into closed session when we do.
Yes, I'll do that. We've got a few closed sessions. There's a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, that's under Government Code Section 54956.9, initiation of litigation, number of cases is two. And we have three, three real property matters, they're all authorized by Government Code Section 54956.8. Under each, the price and terms of payment are under negotiation. The three properties are the proposed disalter parcel, the stock building supply parcel on Berry Street, and the former library on Ponderosa. The agency negotiators and negotiating parties are listed in the agenda.
Okay. Next is new business, oral communications, information items, which we do not require action. We'll start with Mr. Morgan tonight.
Okay. Your Honor, first, I'll be quick, because there's a bunch of meetings. The AWI meeting, of course, we looked at our calendar events coming in the future, and I'm on a committee that is select, I'm gonna try to find a place in Camrio for us to hold our fall, fall thing, so we can all go to it. I'm on the committee for that kind of thing. We also looked at our budget, went over the budget, of course, you know the gentleman there, Shelby, he goes over the budget completely, take a long time. Then we had the, I read at the library, and that was fun. I had 20 little dinky kids, instead of sitting up there above them, I sat down with them, and we had a ball with those books that I had. Then I didn't have to open like this, and like, I just right there with them. So we had a fun, fun day. I let Tony take care of this, because he's on the, he's on, main member, but we did attend a meeting today, open house meeting, and discuss a lot of things, future directions and so on and so forth, but I let Tony cover that.
Of what?
I'm gonna let him cover that, he's, he's our representative, and I'm just an alternate, but I don't want to take away everything from him. Ranch House Foundation budget, we did that, and, and directions we're going in the future. Legislative Committee, we discussed several bills. Who was with me? You were with me, Chan and I did. Interesting bills coming forward, you'll learn about that soon. Ventura County Air Quality Control Board, again, that was one where we looked at, look at where we are in the budget, and how we're going to be short a little bit, but then, and the cuts and things we're making is gonna be, make up for it, so we'll be in good shape. And lastly, I went to comedy night, now this is not part of this, this, but have you ever gone to the comedy night over at, over at the gallery, Kevin?
I haven't, I've heard it's good, though.
You ought to go, it's a lot of fun, and they're, they got you going all night. That's it, Your Honor.
Mrs. McDonald.
Well, Mr. Morgan covered the Legislative Committee, and yes, there are interesting things, but as usual, it's the state of California figuring out how they can take local control and cost us more money, so, more to come on that one. And that is all I have off that list.
Mr. Kildee.
Yes, let's see, along with Mr. Tremblay, I attended a citizens' appointment committee, and I appreciated Dave sending me the email that the trees will be trimmed on Pickwick, I appreciate that. I know we've been working on that for a while, that's gonna be a nice improvement over there, along with Topper's Pizza, so, things are on the move over there, that's good.
But I love that arcade over the road.
Yeah, I know, I know, but anyhow, got a question, and I know the answer, but somebody had, I don't want to mention the end of his name, but, the TOT tax that we are gonna charge for the new hotel and convention center remains the same percentage of every TOT that we charge in the city, that's, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. He had asked a question on that, and I assured him that I'd bring this up, but to my knowledge, it's gonna be exactly the same as everybody else, so, just want to bring that up. And, let's see, I think that's it tonight, yeah.
Mr. Tremblay.
Yeah, right.
Okay, meeting since April 25. I spent, together with the mayor, April 30 and May 1 in Sacramento, in the Capitol, speaking with legislators and staff regarding the governor's proposed parolee fire training center, and our opposition to that, and we really focused on the economic issues pertaining to it, which we think is, in essence, a waste of public funds. I can't state it any more bluntly than that. On May 2, I attended a board meeting for the Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, the new Energy JPA. On May 3, we had the Council Policy Committee with Mrs. Craven. On May 7, the Council Citizens Appointment Committee with Mr. Kildee. Yesterday, I had an executive committee meeting for the Economic Development Collaborative of Ventura County, and I then had the pleasure of going from that to the Camrio Library, and together with the mayor, reading to, I guess around 20, 20 or, 20 or so, two, three, and maybe a few four-year-olds, and, and what a delight that was. I was able to get a, some Dr. Seuss reading in, which was, which was really delightful, and Mrs. Craven and I make a very formidable reading team.
Yeah, but you do.
It was like a competition, but we really, we really enjoy it. Today, as Mr. Morgan indicated, there was a meeting of the Ventura County, many of the Ventura County representatives for our new Energy JPA, the, the Clean Power Alliance for Southern California. And just very briefly, we're looking at Camrio customers coming online sometime in 2019, so it's not imminent, more than likely probably be second quarter, third quarter, of, middle of 2019, but one of the things that we have been suggesting is that in the rollout, there are a series of statutorily required noticing that has to occur, and we're suggesting that the CPA go above and beyond that, to talk to people about it, and so, for example, start giving our residents notice, even sometime this year, about 12 months in advance, and then six months in advance, and then, and then the 60 days in advance, et cetera. So there's, again, there's a series of noticing requirements I won't bore you with, but it's critically important that residents be notified as to what's going on, so it's something that I know the city manager is cognizant of, and will continue working on that.
This is regarding to opting out, folks, so that people know they can opt out.
Right. That's correct, but how the whole thing is constructed, right? Because they are, they, as a matter of default, people are going to be with, are going to be receiving their energy.
Right.
Well, the transmission facilities will continue to be Edison, but the procurement of the energy itself will be by this Joint Powers Authority. But folks can opt out of being, of receiving that energy from the Joint Powers Authority if they wish to do so, and stay, and go to Edison, go to Edison as an IOU.
Tony, can I add to that just a little bit? The opt-out levels are 36%, 50%, 100% of, of, and not recycle, um.
Renewable?
Renewable energy. And so, you have a choice, of course, the 100% is about 3% to 4% higher, so it would hit your bill a little bit. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the cheaper one is the one will save you 3% to 4%, and the others will be about even on 50%, and maybe a little higher at 100%. That's what they told us.
Right.
Okay.
And then, we, and I'm sure you all saw, we received a, what I thought was a very thoughtful request from three folks in the Mission Oaks area, asking that the city consider designation, designating a, how they determine it's a, is a dog-off-leash trail in the city. And I remember our prior discussion on this, I think there were issues pertaining to dogs being loose and creating a problem. I, we walk our dog in the Mission Oaks Park just about every day, and she's off-leash, and she sure, she sure enjoys it, and it's, it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity to have that, and now that, that is a park, of course, that is operated by Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District. But this request from these three citizens makes a very good case for seeing whether or not, or, or requesting that the city consider this, and consider designating, for example, a portion of the Baranca in that area, what they refer to as the, well, they say Baranca Canyon, but I think it's called F, F Canyon, right?
F Canyon.
Okay. Designating a, perhaps a specific area within the canyon, or specific times that folks could take their dogs off-leash. And I know that there are challenges inherent in, in doing that, and in the enforcement side, but I, I would like to see staff take a look at this and see what, if anything, is feasible in terms of considering this request, so that's my.
Tony, can we, can I ask, if you're gonna ask that, I'd also like to ask, and we had this problem before, when neighbors said their dogs were coming up there, and they're urinating, not urinating, defecating, and nobody cleaned it up, and that, we had a problem with that at one time, so I'd like to see what we went through the first time, then we can remember what problems we had, okay?
Yeah, I think that'd be part of a review.
Right.
But I, I thought it was a thoughtful request, and I think it's something that should be, I just thought it's something that we ought to look at. We ought to ask staff to look at. That's it for me.
Yeah, five years ago, maybe?
There was also a case of a dog attacking another dog.
Yeah, there was.
I, I remember that, right, I remember that's the case.
And the people who complained and had the problems are still there.
Yep, still there, not just one, there's several neighbors.
All right, well, anyway, that's my request, thank you.
So that was, that's all of your comments?
Blessingly, yes.
Okay. Let's see, I attended the Camrio Ranch Foundation Board Meeting last night. I attended at SciArt their opening of the gallery to recognize the firefighters, and they had lots of pictures of fire trucks from around the county. The young men went around to the different fire stations, it's kind of like a living history, and they took, they taped their, the interviews with the firemen of their thoughts as they entered some of the various fire areas, or as they rescued some of the people. It's very, very interesting, I think it's still there for a short time, and if any of you have the opportunity to go down, I'd certainly recommend you go down, it gives a lot of insight into, into the thoughts they had at the time. Some of them being on a fire truck, and then recognizing from the chatter that their own homes were burning. So those were, it was very interesting. I attended a policy committee meeting, I, as Mr. Tremblay said, I was in Sacramento with him lobbying against the governor's budget proposal, and also lobbying against AB 254, RAS, which might not get anywhere because of federal requirements, it's the one to allow felons to be EMTs. I also attended the Filipino-American Association of Camrio Installation Dinner. And finally, I would like to ask that, when we do adjourn later tonight, that we adjourn in the memory of Stephanie Lynn Wall, who was on one of our finance committees for years and years. Not the finance committee, but one of those housing finance committees.
Yes.
And I will have that name when we do adjourn. Okay, yes.
Was that bill number, was that AB, that's the RAS bill, right?
Yes.
Wasn't that AB 2293?
It might have been.
It is.
Okay, 2293, sorry.
And it was put in suspense filed today.
Oh, it was put in suspense by Assembly Appropriations.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, well, the staff did a good job up there, they found out that it didn't, it would be in conflict with federal requirements for EMTs.
Right.
Certification.
Hallelujah.
So I'm glad to hear that. Okay, we have finished the first part of our agenda, the next thing, we, we've announced those closed sessions, we might or might not get to, because we have a study session, the study session will be in the administrative conference room, and we will recess to those things, and then be back for the rest of our agenda at 7:30. The longest minute of the night is over, it is now 7:30, and I will open this section of the Camrio City Council meeting and ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. Mr. Morgan, could you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Can everyone please stand? Place your hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Okay, first item is, excuse me, public comments. I'm going to, in case there are people who have not been to our council meetings before, I'll tell you our rules for public comments. Each person gets three minutes, I can see a clock over there, and you can see a clock up here. As soon as you state your name for the record, the clock will start, and then it'll count down. When it gets to one minute, there'll be a little red light come on, and there'll be a tone. You still have another minute to finish up your remarks. When your time is up, when it gets to zero, there'll be another tone, and we ask that you finish your comments by then. We have a lot of people who want to make comments tonight, so to be fair to everybody, we'll ask everybody to finish at or by the time, the time that three minutes are up. We also, for the audience, we do not allow clapping, we do not allow booing, we don't allow anything like that. We're here to hear what everybody in the city of Camrio has to say, we want to hear your opinions, and we don't want anybody to feel intimidated about coming up and telling us something that maybe the majority of the people might not agree with. So we ask that you just tell us your opinion, and when other people enact respectfully, when other people tell us their opinions. I'll take, I'll call these in the order that I receive them. Excuse me. The first speaker is Paul Fisher, and after him will be Jay Berger.
Thank you, Mayor Craven, and Vice Mayor Kildee, and other council members. Firstly, let me say that I grew up here in Camrio, and I still live here in Camrio at the top of Upland, and I support SB 54. I think it's important to clarify that this law does not protect undocumented immigrants who have been convicted in the last 15 years of one of a list who have been convicted in the last 15 years of one of a list of 31 crimes or are registered sex offenders. Moreover, there is no documented correlation between an increased crime rate and cities that decline to turn over suspected undocumented immigrants to federal law authorities. Let me say that a different way. Immigrants are less crime-prone than citizens, or have no effect on crime rates. Why is that? Because we have a history of discrimination in this country against immigrants. Firstly, against African slaves, then against Chinese laborers, the Germans, the Irish, the Italians. Each of these groups and their successors have come and assimilated, but they have had to lie low initially for fear of reprisal by those with power, elected officials, and law enforcement. But eventually, these groups became a part of the rich tapestry of the American experience. We are not Europe. Being American isn't contingent upon being born in the United States, but rather by an ascription to an ideal, that all men and women are created equal, that there is such a thing as the American dream, and it belongs to everyone who comes here seeking a better life for themselves and their families, and the rest of us benefit. So let me close by reading Emma Lazarus's poem on the Statue of Liberty. "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send those, the homeless, the tempest toss to me. I lift my lamp beside the golden door." And also, I've heard a number of you make references to your faith tonight, so I would also read something from scripture, Matthew 25, verse 40. "Whatever you do unto the least of my brothers and sisters, you do also unto me." Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jay Berger, and after him will be Hector Moreno.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm Jay Berger. I was so embarrassed to read about the racist and bigoted hatred spewed around the city council meeting two weeks ago. Those cowards blaming-
Can you pull that microphone down so we can hear what you say? Thank you.
Those cowards blaming others for crimes that don't exist generalize and spread fake information publicly without the necessity of facts. Kudos to reporter Carmen Kiesler and the Acorn for including facts and data along with the hyper- probably and lies those 16 obnoxious and offensive persons voiced without concern for truth. I have no idea how many undocumented immigrants those 16 self-serving haters know, but those I know come here to work, provide for their families, get an education, and live the American dream. I do, however, hear about American-born lawbreakers cheating the taxman, parking RVs illegally, leaving yards looking like empty lots, and illegally shooting dangerous holiday fireworks. Nobody calls the police as long as nobody is being hurt. Still, laws are broken, and I don't think the reasons are as justifiable. Unfortunately, we now live in a time when people who used to feel guilty about their prejudice are now emboldened by it without consequences. Those intolerant of the undocumented have no understanding that he or she is a person who had no choice where he was when his mother gave birth. True patriotic Americans are empathetic humanists who don't hide their heads when the tired and poor are in need. We reach out our arms and lend a hand. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States that provides liberty and justice for all, regardless of national origin. I urge the city council to ignore the ridiculous arguments by outsiders using our venue to enhance their political aspirations. Help remove fear many experience worrying about a police action in their homes or businesses that could break up their families. Don't take an action aligning us with more authoritative governments rallying paranoia, looking for scapegoats. That kind of persecution has no place in America, and definitely no place in Camarillo. Thank you.
Next speaker is Hector Moreno. And after him will be Grace Di Tomaso. Di Tomaso, I'm sorry.
My name is Hector Moreno. Good evening, all city council members, Vice Mayor and Mayor, Mrs. Charlotte Craven. Good evening, all of you. I come here to rebuttal all these people that think that illegal aliens are such a good people. They disregard the murder of Kate Steinle by an illegal alien that was deported five times, and that they come here illegally, that they're committing that federal crime. This SB 54, it is nothing but an obstruction to the Constitution of the United States of America. United States of America is a very compassionate country. We do accept like at least a million people that come here legally every year. They come through the legal channels, going through the legal process, just like I did. I don't believe that I'm going to be giving you lessons of patriotism, since I'm also a, I'm just a naturalized USA citizen. I come from another country, but I came here in the legal process. I didn't come here breaking any federal laws, nor trying to pretend that I so much disagree with these people that accept breaking the law is not a crime. It is a crime. They're breaking our, the law of the land. It is time for us to stand up and do the right thing and start obstructing the federal law. How can I be telling you this, since I'm not even born in this country? I tell you this because when I raised my hand to pledge allegiance for this country, that implied responsibilities on my part to stand for this country, to defend it against all enemies, foreign or domestic, regardless of who they are. And these people here, they're not just, let's say, 1,000 or 2,000, they're 12 million and possibly even more illegal aliens breaking the law. That's why there is so much conflict of interest with these politicians that do not want to uphold the Constitution. They are traitors to the Constitution, traitors to the United States of America, and those people should be put in their place. It is time to start prosecuting all the elected officials that are obstructing federal justice, the federal law. We need to stand up, do the right thing, and opt out of this unconstitutional law. SB 54, it is the most conflicted, in direct conflict with the Constitution of the United States of America, protecting and giving sanctuary to criminals that are breaking our federal laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Grace Di Tomaso? If I pronounced it wrong, I apologize.
You pronounced it beautifully. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens. My name is Grace Di Tomaso. I have lived in Camarillo for more than 10 years, and I love it here. I am also grateful to live in the state which has passed SB 54, a compassionate and legal response to an overzealous, heartless federal mandate that divides families, jails people without a hearing for months and even years, and accomplishes very little or nothing toward making my community a safer place to live. I respect the immigrants who have come here to work and support our economy and to improve their lives. I hope that someday soon, Americans will come together, like we used to, to hammer out a realistic, humane, and truly American solution to the immigration and refugee situations that we face. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Body?
Good evening, council members, and city manager, city attorney, and all others. I just, me and my wife just got a house here in Camarillo, and we want to fix it up, but when the contractor saw some things that I mentioned, he mentioned some things that were recently updated in the plumbing code, such as double flush toilets, which are fine, and all other toilets are at 1.28 gallons per flush anyway, so that's fine. But faucets are one thing for the vanities in the bathroom. You've got, the council voted on sensor, or mosin sensor activated sinks, faucets. There are some problems with these. Once they malfunction, sometimes they stay stuck on, so if someone's at work, you have water constantly running instead of being able to shut a valve off on top. The two power sources for them is, one is electrical, so you have to have an electrical box underneath the sink for each fixture, and the other one is batteries. So there's a hazmat issue from that, because you're not supposed to throw batteries into the landfill. So I'm just asking if you guys can reconsider that vote, and if not, then I'll just go with what you guys rule. Thank you.
Thank you, and...
Do we ask staff to follow up on that and let us know?
I believe that is what we adopted.
I know, but I think if we've had problems with those things sticking and staying, then we do have another kind of problem. That's all.
Fred McIntosh?
Have an automatic one, it stays on? We make them have those, state laws, we have those that have a lot of bump.
Hello, council. SB 54 is a hot topic that changes the landscape of California. It was put together into law without voters' approval. This is a very big law that was passed. Since it's been passed, Kevin DeLonge has been trying to defend the bill that Brown passed by saying it would use resources from local law enforcement to arrest otherwise law-abiding farm workers, hotel maids, busboys, mothers, and fathers. This is an untrue statement. It's also a scare tactic. This strikes psychological fear into law-abiding illegal immigrants. Aliens now have fear about reporting crime, or fear of being deported because of all the false statements created by the author of SB 54, Kevin DeLonge. In reality, the sheriffs do not question witnesses on immigration status if they're going to report a crime, or if they're stopped at a traffic light, or there's traffic for violation. The sheriff's department does not use resources on immigration anywhere in the city, only in jails where illegals have committed felonies or misdemeanors that can be tried for felonies. Sheriffs do not go around arresting farm workers, maids, and busboys. It's kind of like one of those false conceptions you'll hear a lot about during public comment. What sanctuary cities do is they protect criminals that endanger public safety, so this is a safety issue. One of the groups that it protects is a misdemeanor network of drug dealers who are also illegal immigrants. And the drug dealing business of illegal drugs is a very big business. It's about $68 billion dollars a year, or about twice the gross profit of Walmart. And in theory, each Walmart grosses about $19 million dollars per year, so this invisible network of drug cartel, or whatever, the current networks of gangs, they're making like double $19 million, but there's no brick and mortar store, just a network of social networks that goes from high schools up to, however they do that, at the nightclubs. Anyway, I just wanted to let everyone know what was going on, and normally, it's hard to get data on illegal immigrants, because people are not allowed to ask their immigration status, but on the federal level, with due federal sentencing, they found out that the sentencing of illegal immigrants for drug crimes are 3.7 times higher than a US citizen. So they're more likely to crook drug offenses. So if we're able to take them off the streets and deport them, it would make the city of Camarillo safer. Thank you. Just having Chris brief.
Thank you. Sandy Sauerman? And after her will be Tim Kidda. Sorry.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Sandy Sauerman. I don't live in Camarillo, but I work here. I've seriously considered moving here, it's beautiful. I live in Thousand Oaks, we're neighboring cities, so that's why I came tonight. I came to lend my support to those who are against SB 54. Wake up Pleasant Valley, it may not be so pleasant pretty soon. SB 54 has only been law for seven months. How can you know the ramifications yet? I think the rest of the country's asleep. They must not realize that California is the crack that will be leaking criminals into the entire country. If we don't fix that crack, the country will be flooded with illegal immigrant criminals in no time. If we want both our cities safe, our cities must join with the federal government and hand over to ICE the illegal criminals. This is about criminals, period. This is about letting our local police cooperate with the federal government in deporting illegal alien criminals. This is not about having an undocumented person who has not committed a crime deported. So let's not mix up these issues. Alan Mansoor, the pro-tem mayor of Costa Mesa, reported at their city council meeting just last week on May 1st, that starting in 2006, for a period of three years, 1,300 criminals were flagged for deportation. MS-13 is targeting and killing, it's targeting and killing police officers all over America. Don't we have enough loose criminals with the passing of Proposition 47? Do you guys get that many Los Angeles police officers live in Camarillo and in your neighboring cities of Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, and Newbury Park to keep themselves and their families safe? You have your own police officers living here. They're here in our community. They love being here, and some of them will even protect us off-duty. So you want to make your city a sanctuary city for the very types of criminals that they have arrested? So the criminals can come here when released from jail or out on bail and just be safe? Would they cause harm or kill those officers and their family members? I don't know. Will they kill innocent members of both of our communities? I don't know. If one person in Pleasant Valley is injured by an illegal immigrant criminal, citizens will need to hold any of those, even in your city council, who did not help deport that criminal accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. I neglected to say that all of you I know know that this is not on the agenda tonight, and so we're not going to take any action tonight, but at our next council meeting, which will be on May 23rd, it will be on the agenda for us to direct staff as to how we're going to go. And then at the following meeting, we will either take an action or not take an action, depending on what we decide. Kim, Tim Kidda, and following him will be Gene, looks like Kohat.
Good evening, Mayor, and fellow city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about, I am opposed to SB 54. I come to you from a law enforcement background. I was in law enforcement for 31 years. I worked neighborhoods in East LA, South Central, and Central Los Angeles. What I hear people say is that without SB 54, people would live in fear of California becoming a police state. Law enforcement actually acting as Immigration Department, arresting people for entering this country illegally. First of all, we don't have time for that. We're too busy fighting crime. Crimes of the state of California and United States. Now, the other thing is, the people report that they live in fear of reporting crimes because they're afraid to be being deported. The state of California has laws, I know the city of Los Angeles did, that any person reporting a crime, or a victim of a crime, or a witness of a crime, is immune from deportation or during that criminal process. And those trials can take three to four years, maybe even, sometimes even longer. The only fear that I saw in the people that I confronted in those families, in those very bad gang-ridden neighborhoods, were a fear of the felon gang members in the street. These people were held captive in their own homes, from these people. When they'd run, when criminals would run from the police, they would literally break down their doors and hold them captive in their own homes. That's what they fear. The only contact I ever had with immigration or ICE while I was a police officer was at the jail- at the jails where it was safe for them to apprehend these people, these felons that were getting out of jail or prison and deporting them. The only time, other times I ever assisted them were sometimes, I mean, I could count the number of times on one hand, where drug cartels had brought people across the border, held them in a home captive, sometimes 300 or 400 people in one single-family residence. And they would have these people either deal drugs for them to make payments for them to be in the country, be driven to the country, or they'd do other things to them, which I won't talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Kida.
Thank you for your time.
Jean, I think it's Kohat? I might be pronouncing it wrong.
No, you're pronouncing it correct. Thank you.
The next person will be, I think it's Allison Eilerman.
Good evening, City Council.
Just pull it.
Thank you for letting us speak up here. I have a list to read from, and then I'm going to explain the list. Counties, Orange County, San Diego County, Tooluma County. Cities, Adelano, Aliso Viejo, Anderson, Barstow, Beaumont, Costa Mesa, Dana Point, Escondido, Fountain Valley, Hasperia, Huntington Beach, Laguna Niguel, Lake Elsinore, Los Alamitos, Mission Viejo, Newport Beach, Orange, Ripon, San Jacinto, San Juan Capistrano, Simi Valley, Upland, Villa Park, Westminster, Wildomar, Yorba Linda, Yuccaipa, and most recently, Santa Clarita. All of these counties and cities have either joined as ambicus, friends of the court, against SB 54, or have decided to opt out and/or join the administration's lawsuit against the lawlessness of California. We are hoping that our city council will take into consideration the facts. You can look them up. You can read the article from the Ventura County Star that I quoted last time I was here, that four criminally illegal aliens were taken into custody by ICE in Camarillo. Four is too many for our little city. I'm hoping that you will look at the facts. This is, again, not against law about abiding citizens, whether they are here legally or illegally. This is about criminal illegal aliens committing heinous crimes in our communities, and these are the cities that have had the courage to speak up and deny SB 54. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Allison Eilerman.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, city council members. I just wanted to express how the average Californian feels. I would imagine that everyone in this room goes about their lives doing the right thing. We do this for moral reasons, but also because laws exist that would imprison us if we broke them. When we see that people are breaking our laws by being here illegally, as well as committing other crimes, and then they're released, we become infuriated. Laws are passed for a reason. Without them, there is anarchy. The reason that all of you were elected, in large measure, was to protect us from this abuse. I know that each one of you understands that what is taking place is wrong. Now you just need the courage to act according to your conscience. Please join the other counties and cities who are joining in the lawsuit against the state of California. Thank you so much.
Thomas Adams. And after him is Neva Galindo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for listening to us this evening. On the topic of SB 54, the question isn't, is Camarillo okay? The question is, do you have the courage to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the oath that you all took? I ran for office a few years ago, even as a candidate. As you know, you take an oath to the Constitution. Our borders are federally governed.
That's right.
One thing to note about the constitutionalists that are rising is that our numbers are growing. You can tell that by the list of cities that have now gone into this, and these are people from all walks of life. A constitutionalist isn't any particular race, creed, or color, it's all. You can tell by many of these meetings on some of the things that have taken place in Arizona. This is something that is out of concern out of being Americans. If you see these city council meetings that you view, they've gone from 10 to 20 to 50 to hundreds. We're not going away. We've been the silent majority for a long time, and we're silent no longer. We see decisions being made without the consent of the public, things being pushed through, through the assembly, through the state senate, that do not have our signature on it, do not have our voice on it. We need to send a message to people making these decisions that they serve by the consent of the governed. That's the way the system works. That's the way we were put together. The message we need to send is that we will no longer be ignored. We have been silent for far too long, and we will be silent no longer. One of the options that's open to you is a stay of enforcement. You don't need to get involved up to the chin in a legal conflict. A stay of enforcement isn't wagging the finger in the state of California, this is not radical. It's simply a statement of saying that until the differences are settled between the state and the federal government, we're going to revert back to where we were. The way SB 54 works, in a nutshell, is it short-circuits the flow of monies within the police departments. As such, it affects their ability to do their job. Anytime you affect law enforcement's ability to do their job is a dangerous, dangerous place to go. Members of the council, Mayor, I respectfully ask that you put SB 54 opt-out on the docket and follow your oath to the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Neva Galindo.
Yes, Alva.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. My name is Alva Galindo. I am for SB 54. I have a lot to say, so I'll speak quickly. I am a child of undocumented immigrants. My parents sought asylum in the United States in the 80s. They were fleeing with their newborn child from the atrocities encountered in Guatemala. My grandfather was captured by militants, tortured for several days, and was lucky to escape with his life. My uncle was not as fortunate. At the age of 14, he was shot and killed in front of my 16-year-old father. My parents soon fled to Mexico and eventually to the border of the United States. With the help of a band of nuns from the Sisters of St. Joseph, they crossed the border into the US and made their way to Kansas. We owe everything to that compassionate nunnery who truly is doing God's work. I was born and raised in Kansas and experienced a normal childhood. We were not vagrants, we did not break the law, however, we did encounter negative backlash. Swastikas were painted on our house. Racial slurs such as "go home wetbacks" were spray painted on our house as well. However, my parents persevered. They learned English, worked hard, and became citizens of the US when I was eight years old. The path to citizenship is a lengthy process and by no means inexpensive. Again, we were not rapists, murderers, or lawbreakers, but a law-abiding citizens. In fact, my sister grew up to be an educator and has been one for over 10 years in the state of Colorado, teaching elementary students the art of art. I myself went on to serve in the United States Army as a chaplain assistant. I served eight years and am a proud United States veteran. I met many wonderful soldiers when I was in, and many of them were undocumented immigrants who joined the Army in order to serve the country and gain their citizenship. We, the people of the United States, must do something for undocumented immigrants, especially for the people of Central America. If it were not for the United States' involvement in the coup of the Guatemalan's president in 1950 and the United Fruit Company owned by wealthy Americans lobbying US congressmen to support the coup, because the Guatemalan government did not protect the interests of the company, then we possibly would not be experiencing a huge influx of asylum seekers in 2018. Guatemala has experienced nearly four decades of civil wars, leftist guerrillas fought a series of US-backed authoritarian regimes, whose brutalities included a genocide of the Maya people. I am a proud Congu Bog member of the Mayan people and a contributor to this community, and cannot and will not stand silent for those who oppose SB 54. Camarillo is my home, too. To sum it up, according to the report from the Bureau of Justice Statistics from 2013 to 2016, non-citizens accounted for 4% of the total prison population in the state and only 11% to 12% at the federal level, cementing the fact there is not a correlation between undocumented immigrants and crimes committed. Instead of focusing on blocking a bell, Camarillo should focus instead on the human trafficking issue that plagues our county, like the recent bust on the 5th of April at a local hotel here in Camarillo. Those are the real crimes we should target. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Franks, and then Dr. Martinez Bravo.
My name is Susan Franks. First of all, I had something else planned to say, but I'm listening to all this talk about laws and the Constitution, and so I want to talk factually about what sanctuary city means. It doesn't mean that undocumented immigrants cannot be deported. It does mean that there isn't sharing of information between the federal and local, between federal government and local law enforcement. That's protected by the 10th Amendment. It also means that there can be a refusal by local law enforcement to honor federal detainer requests. This is also legal because our Constitution says that immigration is the jurisdiction of the federal government. Local law enforcement does not have the authority to enforce immigration law. So if we're going to talk law, if we're going to talk the Constitution, then let's make sure we have the facts right. Undocumented immigrants are protected under the Bill of Rights. The Supreme Court has affirmed the state's right to ignore the federal government's request for information and cooperation in terms of enforcing federal law. It's funny how this used to be a conservative principle. Local law enforcement's primary responsibility is to protect local communities. When undocumented immigrants fear the local police, it erodes public trust and it hurts public safety. Witnesses don't want to come forward. We keep hearing that that's fear mongering. It's not. If you're afraid that you're going to be questioned about your documentation status, then you're not going to call the police when you need them. You're not going to be a witness in a crime. Police and law enforcement work when it's really embracing the community, when the community and the police work together. That's community policing, and that's what makes communities safe. And when our local law enforcement are asked to do the federal government's job, it erodes that trust, and public safety is at risk. There are studies, sanctuary cities aren't new, they've been in California since 1985. There are studies in cities that have had sanctuary status, and they have more public trust, they have higher, statistically higher levels of public safety, and that's because of the cooperation between the citizens. The city council, your job is to protect and serve this community, so I don't understand how you could oppose SB 54 when doing so could really endanger the safety of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Martinez Bravo, and then Bob Dawson.
My name is Dr. Martha Martinez Bravo. I am here as a resident of Camarillo, as a mother of three young children, as an ethnic minority woman, and as a scholar advocate with a master's and doctorate degree in clinical psychology. I am deeply concerned about the us-versus-them mentality that has been brewing in both our country and in our community. I am worried that many of those opposing the sanctuary bill, SB 54, are those who empower the us-versus-them mentality. I am deeply concerned about the negative psychological impact that this mentality has on our community as a whole. First off, language is powerful, and the use of terminology that dehumanizes people, such as, quote, "illegals," is worrisome and sets precedence for the us-versus-them mentality. It is the same reason that we don't call people retards. Instead, we understand there are people with mental retardation, and there are people with undocumented status. The videos and comments of those opposing SB 54 utilize terminology that dehumanizes people, and frankly, this is not an image of healthy communities that I would want for our city. This is not productive to our community, and there are other topics that you, as our representatives, could focus on for the overall health of our city. As you may be aware, the FBI reports indicate that there has been a nationwide increase in hate crimes from the election up to the present, targeting marginalized groups, including people of color, LGBTQ people, Muslims, and Jews. In our county itself, I have become aware of some of the hateful things that have been occurring. It was reported to me that during a play date, an elementary school child said that their parents were voting for a certain candidate because they were, quote, "white," and that, quote, "we have to be careful because blacks can vote, but now Mexicans can't." This is an elementary school child who plays on the same playground as my kids, and whatever this child is hearing at home is certainly not a message of love. As a mother, I am deeply pained by experiences such as these, especially when children are being fed seeds of hate. I can continue on to list some of the hateful things that have occurred in Ventura County, from the Hitler speech being played on the megaphones in Newbury Park High School, to those who proudly fly their Confederate flags in Camarillo, to the swastikas that were drawn in Thousand Oaks Parks and Newbury Park, to those vientos tagging that read "F-U-N-I-G-E-R." And while it is disturbing to hear, it is significantly worse and painful to experience being the target of such hate. The lens through which we perceive the world is largely influenced by one's position in either a subordinate minority group or a dominant majority group. Furthermore, as psychologist Dr. Beverly Tatum points out, those in the dominant group tend to have a misconstrued perception of what life is like in those in minority groups.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Bob Dawson. And after him will be Matthew Lorimer.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Bob Dawson. I live on Spindrift Court here in Camarillo. I am very disappointed and saddened to see some of my neighbors lobbying you to take a stand against the state sanctuary bill. I'm here tonight because I want you to know that many of your constituents are strongly in support of SB 54. I'm a Camarillo resident of more than 50 years, and over the decades, I've learned that if Camarillo is anything, it is a welcoming community. You should be proud of that, and opposing the principles of SB 54 as a city would be completely contrary to our welcoming nature. But beyond that, beyond what I feel, there are also a few things that I know. I know that there is no evidence that immigrants bring additional or more serious crime to our community. In fact, the evidence is actually the opposite, that immigrant communities have lower crime rates than other populations. I urge you to stick to the facts as you consider the issues around SB 54, and I hope you will resist the urge to give into unwarranted and unnecessary fears. I also know that your job is to spend our tax dollars wisely. I know that SB 54 delineates the jobs of our local law enforcement agencies from those of federal immigration enforcement agencies. Local law enforcement doing the jobs of immigration enforcement agencies is not an efficient or wise use of our tax dollars. And I know those kinds of policies would create more problems for local law enforcement than they would solve. Further, I know that the anti-SB 54 conversations are being instigated by an organization called Federation for American Immigration Reform, and I know that organization's goals are to divide Americans and persecute minority communities, and that fair, as they are known, actually have little or no interest in the general safety or well-being of our community, or for that matter, anyone who does not support their caustic objectives. For most of you, we've crossed paths many times over the years. I respect you all very much for the leadership and guidance you provide for our city government, and I know you all to be very smart people. And I want you to know that you have an active constituency who will back you when you have to stand up to the bullies who want to divide us and make us hateful. Resist them and resist their awful doctrine. California has done the right thing in its passage of SB 54, and I urge you to do the right thing in supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Lorimer, and after that is Manuela Walter.
Good evening, city council, people at home and people in the audience. First thing I want to talk to you tonight is, the post office is doing a food drive this Saturday. You can fill the bag by the post office or fill a bag. It's really important, this food goes to pantries, local, and across Ventura County. So I hope the city council will support this by making a comment at the end of the night and supporting this. This Saturday, put this out. It's... It's really appreciative, and the community can really use it across. Thank you. The next thing I want to talk about is the firehouse. The firehouse was bought 20 years ago. Four of the City Councilmen are there. Tony Tremblay wasn't there. It was bought from the county for about $300,000, then the park for $1 million because you guys wanted to get in the restaurant business. And here it is, 23 years later. Three years, we've been waiting for you to sell that. Mr. Norman here makes about $300,000. If he worked in private industry, he'd be fired, okay? The idea that that still is not sold is unacceptable, and it's the reason why we're calling for term limits. It's also, Mr. Morgan, the Fiesta scandal, okay? That was horrible, where there was an embellishment. He knew about it, covered it up. We could go on and on about the City Council, okay? You've been in office for 118 years. So I will be at Vaughn's in Mission Oaks tomorrow between 4:00 and 6:00. I'm encouraging people, basically, to sign term limits. This would basically allow for two four-year terms, and basically, the City Council could not run again. Again, they've been in office for 118 years. It's time for change. This City Council, nowhere in the county do you see something like this. Term limits are needed in this city, okay? And Mr. Tremblay brought up his own bill, which allows them to skip a year, go back for 12, you can go back and forth on that. It's not good enough. Basically, eight is enough for this City Council. Eight more years, and you guys need to retire, okay? Find something else to do, but it's time. It's really important that you do follow through on the sanctuary city. Both sides need to have their opinion, and again, there shouldn't be any excuses. It should be put on, and I would allow for more time. I don't think you should have much on the agenda. I think you should allow for quite a long evening, because there's going to be a lot of people. And people need their voices, and that's important, because you're public servants. You serve the public, and you can't take a pass when something's not good or bad in life. You have to be open to listen to both sides, and it needs to happen, because it's going around this country. Whether you're for it or against it, it's important, okay? And it's important that you hold that meeting and not cower out or make excuses. So we'll see if it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuela Walter, and then we'll be Barbara Williams.
I spoke during the non-agenda public comments at the April 25th City Council meeting, urging you to support the growing number of cities and counties in California who are challenging our state's unconstitutional sanctuary state law, SB 54. Citizens and legal residents of all walks of life and political parties up and down this state are saying, "We are sick and tired of the California Legislature having more concern for those in our state illegally than for legal residents, and we are not going to take it anymore." California voters were sold a bill of goods in 2010 with Proposition 14, the Top Two Primaries Act, where many of the backers touted that this would result in the election of more moderate Democrats. Eight years later, 2018, do you see any moderation by the Democrats in Sacramento? In the 2016 election, thanks to Prop 14, California voters had a choice between extreme liberal Democrat Kamala Harris or extreme liberal Democrat Loretta Sanchez for U.S. Senate. How does this relate to SB 54? It is the liberal Democrat majority in this state who are passing legislation such as the sanctuary state law that risks the safety and lives of our law enforcement officers and legal residents. However, this is not really a partisan issue. It is a matter of public safety, constitutional overreach, and ignoring federal law. Enough is enough. I am asking you, the Camarillo City Council, to commit to putting opt-out SB 54 on your May 23rd council meeting agenda, and take a stand with our Ventura County sister city, Simi Valley, in challenging this unconstitutional law imposed on California citizens by our state legislature who thumb their noses at our federal laws and U.S. Constitution. And I'm glad to hear Mayor Craven that it will be on the next agenda. It is about time that citizens and legal residents' welfare are put on the front burner. You have the power and the duty to be one of the California cities who stand with our Constitution on this issue. Will you?
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Barbara Wilson, and then we'll be Bridget Fisher.
I hope you met Barbara Williams.
Who you mean, Williams?
I'm sorry. I thought I said Barbara Williams and then Bridget Fisher.
I would like to address the proposed development of the Camero Springs Golf Course when it is not on the agenda, so that my issues and concerns will be heard by you. I am not alone in my beliefs. When you allowed Mr. Richards and New Urban West to continue the process of proposing the development of a senior community on the golf course property, you were given the impression that Ron Kestner spoke for the whole community, and that the majority of the community supports the proposed development of homes at the western edge of the golf course. Not true. Notifications were limited, and many who opposed any development got either no notification or last-minute notification, so they could not organize. Professionals addressed selected groups of people within Camero Springs, gave them a one-sided story of the benefits of the development, and none of the negative impacts. People were skillfully coerced and even bullied into believing they had to compromise, or the golf course would be shut down, fenced off, and the property left to become unsightly. They were bribed with food, shown expertly-prepared renditions, and promised many things that may not be possible nor plausible. They were led to believe Mr. Richards and New Urban West have the right to develop their property. They were led to believe Richards and New Urban West have the right to have the property rezoned to support their plans to make tens of millions of dollars in profit, to a property they bought at a bargain price. Sterling Hills was owned by the same people and also sold. The new owner of Sterling Hills is keeping it as a golf course. Supporters were given T-shirts, professionally-printed signs, fed before the City Council meeting, and driven in a bus to the meeting. They were led to believe development is a foregone conclusion, and they would lose any concessions if they did not support the plans. Promises of addressing the flood plain, wildlife, water, and traffic issues were believed when options to address those issues were not even addressed. Some were told that if they supported the request, it would never be approved. They were led to believe the initial studies would show the development should not be done, and that would force Mr. Richards to sell off the property. However, as we have learned, that is not how Mr. Richards works. As we have seen in Camarillo, developers often sue because they've spent money. There's a grassroots effort of residents and concerned citizens that oppose the proposed development of the golf course. I assure you that you were given the wrong impression. We do not have benefactors like Mr. Richards and New Urban West pouring money into our campaign like they did to give you the impression the community supports. So be aware, we're going to hold you accountable for keeping 18 holes there, and I ask you to require that the clubhouse and restaurant be fixed, to see if it is a viable solution. And please see that all of us in Camero Springs are notified of the testing results. And in summary, I do not support SB 54. I think felonious illegals need to be imported to protect our safety. I am not a hateful person. I am not a racist.
Thank you. Bridget Fisher.
So I'm Bridget Fisher, and I've lived in Camerio since 1991. I never missed the opportunity to vote. This is the second City Council meeting that I've ever attended. The first one was about 23 years ago. Mike Morton was the mayor at that time, and I got a special commendation for helping to paint those bougainvillea signs in the median strips. So I'm here for the second time. I'm just simply going to say this. I stand with the sanctuary seekers, and I'll just end with this. Whatsoever you do to the least of my brothers and sisters, you do unto me. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Martinez, and after that will be Ben Dransfeld.
My name is Sandra Martinez, and I'm from Camerio, and I'm here to support SB 54. Please listen to the Camerio residents. Thank you.
Ben Dransfeld. Are you Ben?
I'm Beverly Dransfeld.
Oh, Bev!
Yes.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
No worries. My Vs look like Ns. My name is Bev Dransfeld, and I am here as a member of the Camerio community. I stand here in full support of SB 54, the community, and I stand here because, I'm sorry, I've heard two different versions. I stand here in support, not for the obvious reasons. Immigration is a polarizing issue. Each of us are pretty set in our beliefs regarding the topic. I'm not here to debate that at this moment. I'm here to focus on the well-being of Camerio. SB 54 simply states that local and state resources will not be utilized for mass deportations. Immigration is a federal issue, and being so, it is federal resources that should be utilized. I want to point out this technicality, because this should be all of our concerns. As a community, we should not have our funds diverted. Our resources are better spent by improving our city and keeping all of its residents safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Angus, Angus Simmons, I'm sorry. And then Jessica Romero.
Honorable Mayor Craven, honorable members of the council, and ladies and gentlemen, I am a resident of Camerio, and I support SB 54. I want to say first that I love our police department. I benefit very much from their serve-and-protect mission. When I leave my door open at night or run out of gas on the street, I'm unfailingly supported and protected and helped. And SB 54 is not a soft-on-crime bill. In fact, as soon as it was adopted, Chief Beck of Los Angeles endorsed the bill and said it really was much of what they've been doing since 1979 with Special Order 40, which has them not enforcing immigration law. And it helps with community policing and relationships with residents, and being able to get good feedback from the community so that you can go after crime. And SB 54, it's a long bill, but about two-thirds of the way through it, there's a notwithstanding all of the things that have come forward, and it states, and it states all of the areas under the Trust Act and the 800 categories of felonies and serious misdemeanors, which are called wobblers that can be upgraded to felonies, where cooperation between police departments and ICE can take place. And the Association of California Police Officers was initially against SB 54 when it was being worked on, and then, after these provisions were put in, they changed their position to neutral. There's nothing in SB 54 that would prevent ICE from carrying out its mandates and using its resources to do its federal job. And most academic studies show that there's an inverse connection between immigration and crime. That is to say, in immigrant communities, crime tends to be lower. I love being in Camerio. I love hearing that tourists come to Los Angeles and want to go to Outlet Mall. I love our community having, being a wedding destination, having a wonderful university, having agriculture, and I think it's a welcoming community. I love the serve-and-protect mission of our police. I would urge you not to take any measures against SB 54. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Boyer.
I'm Bruce Boyer. I'm candidate for sheriff here in Ventura County. This is not the forum to debate federal immigration law. Sorry, people, that's in Congress. The issue before this City Council is one of law and order. We have a federal constitution. Immigration law is absolutely what the Congress is in charge of. Somebody wants to tell you that we shouldn't enforce federal law? Really? Pass a $300,000 bill? Come on! These people have no clue what they're talking about, or they're deceitful. Take your pick. I think they're deceitful. They know full and well. It is the responsibility of our local law enforcement to enforce the law. It is the responsibility of the legislative bodies to make the law. Congress has the authority for immigration law, not the state legislature. When the state legislature passes laws that conflict with federal laws, to where they say to that officer, if he carries out federal law, or anybody carries out federal law, that we are subject to arrest, imprisonment, prosecution, the whole ball of it, he loses his badge and pension, this is rebellion. If these people don't like what Congress is doing, well, they can vote for somebody for Congress. But this is immigration law, and that's what you're dealing with, is rebellion. Now, I think sending a nice, amicus brief is all well and good, but at the end of the day, that's not going to protect the people of Camerio. And if they think they're safe with the illegals here, I didn't hear a one of them volunteer to take them into their homes and pay all the bills, because this cowboy is done paying taxes for illegals. Done! So what I'm asking you to do on behalf of the people is you have a contract with the Ventura Sheriff's Department to provide law and order and enforce the law, not to be in rebellion. Send Sheriff Gene a letter that says you want your money back. You have a responsibility to the taxpayers. They pay the taxes, we pay the taxes, with the expectation that we will have law enforcement for our money. That's why you have a contract with the Sheriff's Department. And if he doesn't want to follow through with the contract, there's your new chief of police. Start a police department and hire him. Now, if I take office in January, you won't need to worry about that, because my policy will be to take all illegals, ALL is spelled A-L-L, and illegals are those who are in this country without proper legal identification, and turn every one of them over to ICE. That will solve the problem. And the other 57 counties can have all the illegals, because if you don't, sanctuary state is going to double the problems we have in California, double the problems in Ventura County, double our crime, double our taxes. Thank you.
That's all the cards I have for speaking. I have some. Did you feel our yellow card?
You skipped me over. My name is Jessica Romero.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did skip you over. I called it once, and I didn't call it the second time. I apologize. Don't be offended. What I was going to say is, if there's anybody else who'd like to speak, get a blue card. If you filled out a yellow card at the top, it says non-verbal card.
She's got it in her hand, Charlotte.
Okay, if you have it in your hand, okay, give it to the city clerk. I was just going to ask for more people to speak if they wanted to speak. Okay, Jessica.
Hi. Good evening, City Council members and mayor. As a current resident of the city of Camerio, I support SB 54. Protecting our undocumented community is extremely important. The current administration regularly tells the public that undocumented immigrants are a threat to the public safety, but that is not true. I currently attend CSUCI, and will be receiving two degrees next week. I only bring this up because I am the daughter of migrants who came here seeking asylum in the 80s, escaping a civil war in Central America that the U.S. funded. Immigrants contribute to the economy tremendously and raise people like me. We need to stop separating families and deporting millions of people, and I would gladly take undocumented people in my homes if I had the space. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you'll be next.
Thank you. Hello, City Council. My name is Dura Young. The federal government has a responsibility of protecting our nation and supporting our Constitution. We have to be consistent across our nation in support of the Constitution and its federal laws. Kevin DeLeong created the sanctuary state law to prevent immigration enforcement inside of jails for misdemeanor crimes. The California State Sheriff's Association remains opposed to the bill, because it only addresses 80% of the crimes. The other 20% of crimes committed by criminal illegal aliens is a part to be concerned about. This is a loophole factor of SB 54. The crimes that are not covered under SB 54 are human trafficking, smuggling, narcotics trafficking by drug cartels, domestic violence, and repeat drunk driving. All we are asking is that your local law enforcement can communicate with ICE for these types of offenses. I keep hearing over and over again how SB 54 does not protect illegal aliens who want to report crimes without fear of being arrested for their immigration status. This is totally false. They do not have to be afraid to report crime because the California police and sheriff does not play a role in immigration enforcement. Why? Because local law enforcement does not ask the immigration status of witnesses or those that report crimes. California must stop obstructing federal law enforcement. The Democrats in power are destroying our constitutional rights as citizens. And I would never have voted for this. Every citizen has a right to be protected by federal law. By putting together an amicus brief, your city council will be sending a clear message that you want federal law to supersede California law. Let's get rid of these unconstitutional laws that are put in place without voter approval. We are not responsible for failed nations, whatever country it is. We are not responsible for that. Billions of dollars per year are being spent for illegal aliens. We must take care of our Americans first. We must take care of our veterans first. We must take care of our homeless first. We must take care of our foster children first. Over 60,000 Americans have been killed since 9/11 by the hands of illegal aliens. When you jump over the fence and you're on American soil, you are a fugitive. You want to respect our laws. You must get in line and become a legal citizen, just like everyone else. Just like everyone else has spent five, 10, 15 years to become a legal American citizen.
Thank you. This gentleman up here is next.
I put in a card.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
I'm Brian Morris. I didn't come here for SB 54, but I do want to declare that I and my family oppose it very seriously and for the very good reasons given here tonight. I have a couple of other items, however, that why I'm here. One would be the item number CC 18A, which has to do with expanding your notification from 300 feet to 600.
Okay, that's a public hearing and that's coming up next.
Oh, then I have another thing that I...
Okay.
And I'm going to read this for Barbara Williams because we had a lot of different issues tonight. And so, I hope I don't get in trouble, whatever it is that's here. I have asked you previously to repave the Camrio Springs Road. The road continues to deteriorate since the roads continue to have truck traffic that exasperates the problems. Caltrans has a facility on Adore Lane and uses Camrio Springs Road quite often. Heavy foreign vehicles frequently use the road to go from one side of US 101 to the other. People bypassing the traffic on US 101 frequently use Camrio Springs Road and Ridgeview. It is as though we are the ugly stepchildren of Camrio and we don't need to be treated the same as the rest of the city. We pay the same taxes as I approved to you a few years ago when I had both the house in the Springs and another in Mission Oaks. Our HOA maintains the streets within our community. We do not get streets sweeping after trash day like the rest of the city. So, we are actually a bargain, but you don't seem to want to fix Camrio Springs Road. A slurry coat is too late and the road now needs to be repaved. It would probably cost less than the new Camrio sign at the northbound off-ramp to Lewis via Daily Drive. And I have repeatedly requested you coordinate with Caltrans to landscape and mask, make the Camrio Springs off-ramps look nice. There are weeds, piles of rock, and cut-down trees there for the scavengers. One park, one spark, or a toss cigarette could cause a lot of problems. We did not benefit from the state's repair funds from the rains and debris flows, even though our damages and losses were used to determine the state of emergency in 2014. Those Caltrans funds went to PCH and other places. All of the other US 101 off-ramps in Camrio look very nice and give a good impression to visitors. They won't listen to me, but they should listen to you. A little bit time left. I'm also the founder of the opposition to the Camrio Springs Project, New Urban West. And so, I just want to give a shout-out that our website is And it's a very large website, has a lot of information.
Thank you.
Your honor, could I ask staff one question regarding that? Can you get this gentleman when their streets are scheduled? Because every street in Camrio is scheduled. If the staff could get that to him, I'd need to know when it's coming.
Because he don't have my address, so...
You don't happen to know of the time?
Go on our website.
We have a speaker card for the public hearing, so we do have your address. They'll contact you later. Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this issue? Or any other issue? I'm sorry. This is public comment, so we'll take any and all on anything that's within our jurisdiction. Yes, sir, come on up. Please state your name for the record.
Gluckard. My name is Michael Smith. I am a Camrio resident. And I guess I'm just disgusted with the attitude towards illegal immigrants. We, as a society, all depend on the labor that they provide. We benefit from the cheap prices that come from the cheap labor. And it makes me sick to think that the law-abiding American citizens who employ them, there's nobody talking about criminalizing their actions. It's the most vulnerable who come here and are in the toughest position, who are bearing the brunt of this argument. So, I just would urge you to consider that whatever you guys decide will say something about our community. And I hope that you will consider that there are many people in the community that feel very strongly that the people who are here illegally are people. And I hope that you will consider that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, then we're going to move on to the public hearing. I'm going to take a five-minute break because I'm assuming that a lot of you people are not interested in the public hearing. And when a lot of people get up and leave, it gets really noisy and we have a hard time hearing the staff report. So, at 8:46 by this atomic clock up here, I'll reconvene. And 19 zoning. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Craven. Michelle Gluckard-Diana will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Craven and council members. We are before you this evening to recommend enhancing the city's noticing procedures to provide more transparency in the process and provide additional notification to the public about pending projects. The proposed zoning ordinance text amendment to the Camrio Municipal Code would add a new chapter 19.84 to consolidate the noticing requirements into one chapter. It would amend Title 18 and Title 19 of the code to incorporate the applicable provisions of Chapter 19.84. These are the projects that require a public hearing notice. The proposed zoning ordinance text amendment does not change the types of projects that require a public hearing notice. Rather, it enhances the scope and method of notification. Our current noticing procedures meet the minimum standards in the government code. And the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment would expand upon the minimum standards to enhance notification to the public. These standards include doubling the public hearing notification radius from 300 feet to 600 feet, mailing a public hearing notice to property owners, HOAs, and POAs that fall within the expanded notification radius, posting a public hearing sign on the subject property, posting the hearing notice on the city's website, and we would continue to publish the hearing notice in the newspaper. If the ordinance is approved, staff would prepare templates to guide the implementation of the new standards. For example, we intend to have a template that would guide the applicant on the maximum height and size of the onsite sign. The location of the sign would vary from residential versus commercial and industrial properties, with the desired outcome being one sign per street frontage in the location most visible to the public. No illumination of the sign would be allowed and only factual information about the project could be posted. The sign would need to be installed the day before the noticing period begins and removed the day after the appeal period ends. These templates would ensure consistent implementation of this ordinance. In working on this text amendment, staff identified an opportunity to improve our mailed notice. Currently, we have a one-page notice that is folded, inserted into an envelope, and that envelope gets a mailing label attached to it and then it's processed for mailing. Staff anticipates implementing a new postcard notice. This will be a half-sheet printed on cardstock. The postage will be more affordable than a traditional mailed envelope. It'll be more efficient for staff because it will eliminate the folding of notices and the stuffing of envelopes. And it also provides us with an opportunity to work with our applicants to have them submit labels electronically and that could be turned into a mail merge and printed directly on the postcard. Most importantly, we feel that the new design of this notice will be easier to identify in the mail for the public and it will also allow us to put a location map on the back of the notice that will help the public more easily identify the project site. The proposed ordinance is not subject to CEQA and is covered by the general rule that CEQA applies only to projects that have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Therefore, the adoption of this ordinance is exempt from CEQA. The proposed amendments to the code will enhance the city's efforts to notify the public of pending land use matters and are intended to increase public awareness and participation in decisions regarding the development of the city. This, in turn, furthers the purpose of the city's general plan, which is to guide the development and use of the physical structure of the city through community goals, objectives, principles, and standards. At the public hearing of April 17th of the Planning Commission, staff presented this zone text amendment to the Planning Commission. The commission fully supports the proposed ordinance and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the ordinance to your council. Therefore, staff recommends that your council request a reading of the title of the ordinance, waive further reading, and introduce an ordinance adding Camrio Municipal Code, Chapter 19.84, and making other conforming code changes pertaining to public hearing noticing standards. This concludes staff's presentation.
Are there any questions? Mrs. McDonald.
I have a question, and I don't think this is even part of the new part, but I just want to make sure I understand it since we're looking at it closely. And this is on Big A6 and Item A. The applicant is the one who has to provide the address list. That's what this is telling me. And then, the mailing list must be certified. So, who certifies it? The county?
Whoever prepares the mailing labels certifies that the labels are prepared correctly and according to assessor records. And that's our current practice now, so we would continue that practice.
So, it's the county office that does the certification, not the applicant?
It may be, but more frequently, we're experiencing having our GIS staff assist with that. We charge a nominal fee and we use our GIS database and it's efficient for our customers and we know it's accurate. So, that's nine times out of 10 how it happens.
Good, that sounds better. I was trying to picture who was doing what and it would be difficult if you're an applicant to know unless there was some certified method.
I think that was all my questions. Any other questions? What are the wishes of the council? Oh, this is a public hearing, I'm sorry. And I do have two people who want to speak. So, I'll open the public hearing and I'll call Barbara Williams. I've got her card right here. You've got your card, too.
While it is commendable to increase the distance to a property having a public hearing from 300, 600 feet, it needs to be recognized that there will be other instances whereby people farther than 600 feet from the property of concern need to be notified. In my opinion, and in order to enhance transparency, there needs to be an exception to the 600 feet, which I shall call the sphere of influence. While one would expect many of the proposed developments could actually impact the entire city of Camrio, surrounding neighbors and businesses could be as affected by the development as those within 600 feet. While one side of the street may be within 600 feet, their neighbors who are across the street may not get notified even though they are just as impacted as the neighbors across the street that are within 600 feet. I would like to use the Camrio Springs Golf Course as an example to further clarify this. While the, you know, the Camrio Springs certainly affects homes within 600 feet and stuff, the entire community of Camrio Springs is within the city limits of Camrio and would be affected. The golf course is a floodplain for the entire community. The runoff from every home and every street in Camrio Springs either goes directly onto the golf course or goes into the nature park and then is directed onto the golf course. So, therefore, everybody in the community, even though we're more than 600 feet, we would be concerned with something going on with golf course property. For, you know, all those reasons, a public hearing, you know, would be of major concern to entire Camrio Springs community. And to exclude those greater than 600 feet who may not have seen the posted notice of the public hearing could mean that city staff or the council does not get a complete set of issues associated with the project currently being proposed. So, in the best interest of transparency and full disclosure to the residents of the city of Camrio, please amend this chapter of the Camrio Municipal Code to include the notification to those within a sphere of influence that could be significantly impacted. Thank you.
I'm curious as to what is your definition of sphere of influence? Because we have a legal sphere of influence and it's greater than the entire city. So, I'm just asking, are you suggesting we send everything to everybody within the city's sphere of influence?
That's why I gave you a specific example, you know, that, you know, I could address in order to do that. In other words, you know, everybody in Camrio Springs would be interested in a public hearing associated with something on the golf course because everybody is affected by that.
So, your answer is no, you're not talking about the legal sphere of influence?
No, no, I'm talking about, you know, somebody, you know... And the example of, you know, where, you know, it's 600 feet on one side of the street and not on the other side of the street. You know, both sides of the street would certainly be interested in it. And so, that would include the sphere of influence.
Okay, thank you. Brian Morris? That's what happened to your card. You put down this item and I had it right here for this item.
I thank you so much for taking good care of it.
I only lost one tonight, Mrs. Youngs.
Anyway, I just wanted to expand a little bit on what Barbara had to say. And that is, especially in Camrio Springs, you have different issues for different people depending on the distance from whatever your center point is. So, if the center point's the clubhouse, for example, you know, 50 feet out from that is one set of concerns and eight blocks away is a completely different set of concerns.
It's not from the center point, it's from all of the perimeter. You go 600 feet.
Is that circumference?
You take the perimeter and you go 600 feet out from every part of the edge.
So the radius?
Yes.
Yeah, uh-huh. So that's what I mean. So another...
But not from a center point?
Well, if you have a radius...
600, that's what I'm trying to tell you. Here's the edge, here's an edge, here's an edge. We're assuming it's a square piece. So it's 600 feet from each edge.
Okay, all right. Still, in the case of Camarillo Springs, it would be way too small to get the reaction from those people in the outer areas. For example, where I live, we wouldn't be included. I noticed that there was something written about, and also a conversation I had yesterday with the city, that perhaps you'd have some notification through the HOAs. And I can guarantee you, the HOAs, certainly in the situation with Camarillo Springs, are not going to be cooperative in sending out anything to do with this matter. So that, in this particular case, it wouldn't work. So I guess what we're really, or I'm saying, I don't know about Barbara, but in case of Camarillo Springs issue with New Urban West, if you could expand out and give us more area for the notification, we would appreciate it because everybody needs to know that they have an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Lorimer? You're Matthew twice in one night? You're not being...
Three times in a charm, twice, who knows? Good evening, City Council. As you know, I ran for City Council several times. And this was brought up different times at different venues, with Kevin and different events. People, a lot of people feel it should be 1,500 feet, okay? 600 feet, you know, well, if the driveway's too short, we don't have to notify them. I mean, realistically, 1,500 feet, considering the traffic is the worst it's been since the projects have been approved by you guys. It's a, what about the street that's up the street where the traffic flows down, but you don't give them a notice because they're not in between 600 feet? 1,500 feet was brought up, not by me, but when I ran for City Council and I talked to people, they said 1,500 feet is what they requested. That's what people wanted because that's a clear sightline of seeing a project. That means actually going out, seeing it. What you're saying here is from 300, 600 is better. You know when I look at this, you know what this looks like to me? Because it's election time. We got to put something in the public domain because three of you are up for election. We got to give something for the voters to say that we're doing something. I don't particularly like this. This should have been done a long time ago, but when you're in election year and you come out with this, the public needs to ask the question, did you do this because you're, three of you are up for election? I mean, you got to ask that question. 1,500 feet, I think, is what we need. And why? City of Camarillo, if you go down here, you got Arneal Road, you can get anything. This city is compacted pretty deep, all right? The freeways are overcrowded. You can go down the freeway, trust me, I come from Thousand Oaks. Coming down the Canale Grade to Camarillo is tough. And the point is, if you're going to go to 600, let's be reasonable, 1,500 would be a much better thing. And that came from people who have been near Village of the Park, different locations. When I knocked on doors, I didn't come up with that number. They said, they've looked at different things, different people, and I kind of agree, 1,500 feet, there's not, you know, if you want to be transparent with the public, what's the difference to go 1,500 feet? That's reasonable, okay? From 300 to 600 doesn't seem far enough because people don't like development. I know you voted for a lot of projects, but I think it's worth exploring. Do you have to vote on this tonight, or can you look at 1,500 feet? I mean, I think it's more than fair. I mean, it's going to cost the city a few more bucks, pass it on to developer, you like to pass user fees on, send it to the, put it in the user fees. It's not going to cost the city money. So think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to us about this issue? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and ask for what are the wishes of the council? Mr. Kildie?
Is there a way that, Joe, you might be able to show from 300 to 600 feet and where that starts in the matrix, if you will, vis-à-vis, especially like in a, if you use the Camp Springs area, if you use Del...
...elected to incorporate into our public hearing noticing requirements that goes above and beyond what we've done in the past?
Can I ask? You finish? Mrs. McDonald?
Going a little further, I know we talked about this as we, and we've been working on this for quite a while. This didn't just pop up because it happens to be election year. But when we talked about it, you talked about the fact that you, being your department, has some discretion as well. So if you take the 300 or the 600 feet and you end up in the middle of somebody's driveway, you're not going to say, oh, that's it. You're going to use your discretion to go out and cover what you see to be that sphere that you...
That's correct. So for the instance of the Shea Homes project that was recently reviewed by the City Council, we had an extensive radius that went out probably beyond 1,500 feet because we thought it was in the best interest of all of the community within that vicinity of the development to be notified of the public hearing. So we do have discretion to provide extra and additional noticing. And so that's what we're really trying to achieve here. It's not to be in a situation where we're trying to hide the ball or do something, you know, deceptive. We actually want to encourage participation and make sure that people have an opportunity to speak and participate.
So this is the minimum? The maximum would be whatever's appropriate? And let's take the golf course, let's take Camarillo Springs, and we talk about that. No matter what your radius is, you've got the center, and your center is your project.
Correct.
So you'd go out and it reanders around, but wouldn't you go out 600 feet from every point?
From the external boundary of the project site, yes. So just the 600 feet would capture a significant amount of the residents, but we'd probably, by matter of our best practices, notify all the residents anyhow. We would definitely notify all the HOAs that are potentially affected. And that's something that we've done as a matter of best practice, but that's now actually incorporated into our ordinance. So if, for instance, all of our staff were to change and go into a different direction, there was new staff, now it's a municipal code requirement, if this is the pleasure of the City Council and this is what you adopt, that any future staff will be required to comply with this also.
And can I keep going? So if, let's take that scenario, new staff, and they're picking up and reading it, is it, do you feel it's clear enough to make sure that they use that discretion that you would use, that that knowledge and ability is passed on?
Yes, we would pass that on.
No question about it, okay. And I do have one on another subject. Mine has to do, again, back to A6, and it talks about charging for a person who has a written request for notices. Such a request may be submitted at any time during the calendar year and will apply for the balance of said calendar year. The city may impose a reasonable fee on persons requesting such notice for the purpose of recovering the cost of such mailing. So we're talking about this 35-cent postcard? One time, or are we talking about somebody who wants every single notice all the time?
All the time.
So for everything that happens, no matter where it is in the city?
Correct.
And so that's why this one has a very nominal fee versus one that would be specific to a particular...
Yes, that's correct.
And these are larger postcards, so they're letter, they're not 35 cents, they're 40...
Oh, they're the bigger ones, okay.
She said half-sheet.
Oh. Sorry, I was giving you a deal. Okay. But that's the reason behind it, because then it would be every single one that went out, they would get the notification.
All over. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, no more questions, comments? I'm disappointed, you don't have a question on this?
No, and the reason I don't have a question on this is that, to be fair to everybody up here and the staff, this is a matter, as Mrs. McDonald said, this is a matter that has been under discussion for a long time. We had a lengthy study session on this, if I recall, and a very thoughtful and lengthy discussion. And I think there are some, I think there are some different viewpoints on, you know, what is enough, to get to Mr. Lorimer's suggestion, do you make it 600 feet, do you make it 1,500 feet, et cetera? But this is something that, you know, I have been certainly a proponent of since arriving here. I think it's fair to say, in fact, it's accurate to say, first of all, you have what are the legal requirements. We're talking about these being above and beyond the minimum legal requirements. So from an increase in transparency and an increase in notice, I think this city is doing it right. And the city has changed its website and postings on notices, so I think there has been increased transparency from there. I do think that we should be open, I think there are, I think this is a product of the council coming together and thinking about and thoughtfully discussing where we can go with what's appropriate at this point. I think we should be open to additional expansions of notice, but I think this is a fair way to go. It doubles in terms of the number of feet, the notice requirement, and we do have that ability, as Mr. Vaca has said, to, in certain circumstances, require enhanced noticing. So for all those reasons, I'm very supportive of this, and we're ready to go to a motion.
Morgan?
Your Honor, at one time, there was a problem at Leisure Village when they wanted to put in their athletic facility there next to the pool, remember that? Well, we were requiring the distance of notification to go clear outside of Leisure Village. That's how big it was. And I can't remember what it was, if it was a county or whatever, but it went outside. And so we got that changed. And there's, and this is perfect, because now it's 600 feet, that keeps you inside the area, at least, of those being affected.
Well, it depends. If somebody has something on the inside of a fence, and it's going to happen, 600 feet is on the other side of the fence, it's people outside Leisure Village might still be notified.
I know, but this was even longer. I mean, 600 feet's not going to get you outside Leisure Village from where they were. Won't do it. But what they were requiring before did. And so we got that changed then. I think now is but making another change, just to the best, betterment of the community.
I don't remember making it smaller.
We did, because they got it built and they were very happy.
Your Honor, I'd just like to make a comment, if I can, before you take a motion. I, too, appreciate this. I think the good thing about it is it's uniform, it's straightforward, it lays out a good course of action, but it still leaves the flexibility to even do more. And so this is the minimum, this is what we would expect. But if the time comes, and you have a feel of what goes on and what, it doesn't, it's not too hard to figure out how far out you need to go. And then also, you know, nowadays, we have so many methods of getting the word out. It's not like the old days where the US Mail was the only way to do it, with our websites, our Facebook page, and all the other methods that people, if they want to know, you know, it's out there in a lot of different forms. So I think it's a good thing, I certainly support it, and thanks, staff, for working on it. Good job.
One more comment, and that is that these notices are also going out to the POAs and the HOAs.
That's right.
And I know a speaker talked about that, but in my view, if your HOAs aren't circulating these notices to members of their associations, they should be. And that is an additional, additional level of transparency over and above. Any association that gets one of these notices should immediately circulate it to all of its members. And that increases that whole expanded territory beyond the 600 feet, so.
Mr. Kildie?
Yeah, I just want to, just for the record, I mean, you know, this is twice what the legal limit. Now, maybe it's not enough, but I think this is a way good step in the right direction. We can always amend this. I think we ought to go forward with this, see how it works, see how effective it is. It was approved by the Planning Commission here. We actually, I think, had our study session, I think it was in early October, if memory serves me correctly. So we've had a lot of discussion on this, and I think it's a real step in the right direction.
What are the wishes of the council?
Through the approval of staff's recommendation.
We'll need somebody to read the title.
Let's read the title.
Oh, read, oh, yes, read.
Okay, I'll do that.
She usually does that, I don't do that.
I know. And I set my agenda aside, okay. Could you read the title?
I'll be glad to. It's ordinance number 1153, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Camarillo, California, adding Chapter 19.84 to the Camarillo Municipal Code pertaining to public hearing notice procedures and making conforming amendments to various sections of Title 18 subdivisions and Title 19 zoning of the municipal code.
Madam Mayor, I would move that council waive further reading and introduce an ordinance adding Camarillo Municipal Code Chapter 19.84 and making other conforming code changes pertaining to public hearing noticing standards.
I'll second the motion.
The motion and a second? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. That ends our agenda for the evening, and we will close in the memory of Stephanie Lynn Wall. Stephanie served on our CDBG Loan Committee since March 1998. Long time on one committee, and she served us well. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.